Order. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Here.
Trustee Markwart.
Here.
Trustee Cook.
Here.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Here.
Trustee Schultz.
Okay, we have a quorum. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'm here, by the way.
Oh, okay. All right. We're really, okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Are there any citizens that wish to address the board? Not, yeah, you guys are for them all, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. There's no official reports. I had a request from Dave Brown on the Annuos Vote Agenda to pull item F because there's been a change in the pricing. So is there a motion to approve A through E and G through, oh.
I'd like to pull another item.
Yeah.
Item I.
Oh, okay. Pull I. All right, well, let me start over again. Anything else want to be pulled? Okay. So the motion is for items, Annuos Vote Agenda items A through E, and then G and H, and then J through O. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, okay. And the pulled item is the one I pulled, 2020-010. This is for the, you know, the new turf field. So Dave, you want to explain things?
Do we get a vote on the first?
You want to do it now?
Yeah, take the vote on.
Oh, okay, all right, well, it's, there's a motion to second on the Annuos Vote Agenda, roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz. President Byrne.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Dave, 2020-010, the ordinance is pulled.
Thank you very much. There's a revised ordinance that I shared and handed out. It should be in front of you. Why is there a change? So this is for the fencing and also for the sports netting for the V-HAC Sports Turf. The original ordinance was for $149,714. After we had a chance to go through the shop drawings, there has been some changes. We identified instead of a swing gate, it's a 12-foot swing gate. Hinges are usually a problem. We're asking for an upgrade of $1,250 so we have a slide gate that's going to last us much longer. The larger issue was, in looking at the shop drawings, we had asked for the spacing of the fencing around it to be spaced at eight feet. Their quote was for 10 feet. They came back and they said, "Well, that's about $11,000." And I said, "That's not for us to pay." So they stepped forward in terms of the contractor. The contractor said they'll absorb $5,600 of it. And then Sports Made Personal, Chad Gruen and his group stepped forward and absorbed the rest of it. So the rest of it's being $6,141. So the net change in terms of the ordinance that was in your packet and what I just shared is essentially the increase for $1,250 for a sliding gate. So that's what's in front of you. And then we appreciate Chad's group for stepping forward and Manager Flyshower for having a conversation with them to make that happen.
Okay, so the, I'm sorry, is there questions?
No, the final number then.
So the final number is $157,105. We will receive payment directly from Sports Made Personal directly.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So made. Second.
Motion is second. Okay, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Motion carries. Okay, next pulled item is I, approval and passage of ordinance 202012 and ordinance amending ordinance 2016-045, granting certain approvals to amend the plat of eat, whoops, I'm reading the wrong one. Pro, 202013, authorizing extension of professional services agreement between Morel and Fiedler in the Village of Earn Hills at an annual cost of $54,000. Trustee Oppenheim.
So as you all know, this past year, recently, we passed an ordinance preventing retail sale of pets in this community. You also may remember that our lobbyist actually came here on behalf of the so-called Illinois Pet Lovers Association, which was diametrically opposed to what our ordinance was in favor of. Furthermore, in the spring of this year, that same organization and our lobbyists were involved in trying to undermine what our votes were regarding that, that resolution that we passed. And I got in contact with my contact at the Humane Society earlier today when I saw that this was on the agenda and asked what was the status of that effort. And he said, "Well, that failed in the legislature in the spring session." But just within the past five days, our lobbyist and the Illinois Pet Lovers Association put forth new legislation that would perhaps undermine our ability to control this and take away our municipal home rule ability. And there were certain parts that he'd mentioned that his Humane Society and others were not so happy about. And so I suggested that perhaps we could write a letter. And he said, "Well, it doesn't look very good if you write a letter and it's your own lobbyist that wrote the legislation." So I know we're in the process of looking to hire new lobbyists, but I also understand that they've been helpful to us in the past in other issues. So I wanted, just wanted to bring that up for discussion and possibly maybe look into this further in terms of this legislature, but also see what other options we had there and to get the history from this body regarding what they've been helpful for.
I'll ask Council on this, so you got any suggestions as far as, you know, reminding them of, you know, our position on that? Or is it such a broad, you know, kind of an issue that affects like what, all the towns, right?
This is the ordinance, because I wasn't here when you passed the ordinance.
Right.
Did you, your ordinance prohibit puppy mills? Did you pass that type of ordinance?
Yeah, essentially that was the intent and. Yeah. Prevented the retail sale of dogs and cats, and then we added bunnies just to make sure that puppy mills weren't sending dogs or cats to our community that were sold in the stores. Even though none of our local stores actually were doing that at the time, there was the potential for that. We had an open space and there was a company that wanted to come in, so we wanted to nip it in the bud.
And the lobbyist took a position contrary for.
Contrary to what, yes.
Mayor, it's the kind of thing where sometimes a lobbyist has to be aware of positions it's taken for clients. And I'm not sure what occurred here. They certainly have the right to take positions across the board, but it doesn't help when they're advocating for you. So it's.
Well, I think then we, you know, we got to, I don't know if I want to let them go because Morel's been really good. And that's, you know, Christ, I bet we go back 10 years ago with these guys. When there was all the issue with the streamlined sales tax and distributing to all the towns. If you lived in Longrow and you bought, you know, your kitchen at Home Depot, we didn't get the sales tax, you know?
Do you think it would behoove us to hold off on this renewal of the contract until you've had a chance to talk to either?
Table it, perhaps?
Yeah, okay.
I mean. At a minimum, I'd like to table it for the moment and then see what we can find out from them. And from my contact, I understand their, this company has paid probably double what we're paying by the Illinois Pet Lovers.
Were these the guys out of Naperville?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
All right, yeah, I'll entertain a motion to table.
Table it.
Okay, there's a motion and who's the second? Okay, we got a first and a second. Okay, roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Okay, motion carries the table. All right.
I guess I would just ask what direction you would like me to take on this?
I think we, maybe we got to, you know, a conversation and then a follow-up email or a letter to Morel. Because he's the guy running the show there. And, you know, usually he's pretty sensitive to this, so.
Well, you did have a conversation with them in the spring, though, did you not?
You mean Fiedler or him?
With Morel.
Christ, if we did, that one, I don't, you know.
Boy, I want to say it was Kurt Fiedler that was here.
No, no, no.
No, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, Doc, you might be right. I just don't, we'll have to go back and check.
Well, let's see what they have to say about it and, you know.
I had a conversation with you and you had a conversation with them and then you got back to me saying you had a conversation with them about it.
Yeah, well, okay, I still need to have another conversation, I think.
Right. So the question is what, yeah.
And we'll have documentation to that extent, you know, Christ.
Are there other alternatives?
I'm sure there are. I mean, I'm just going, these guys, you know, this is back when we had different village attorney. He was recommended from Shane's office, but I mean, you know, they helped us on any, more than just one type of legislation. Where they're, you know, trying to stuff stuff down everybody's throat at the last minute.
I get that and I understand that, you know, our tax money is the lifeblood of our community. So we don't want to do anything to damage that. But the question is, I don't know, you know, what lobbyist groups are out there and whether or not there are others that could equally do do the kind of work that we need to have done.
There are alternatives for sure. I mean, this company has a track record of doing a really excellent job on a critical issue for this town, which is sales tax.
Absolutely.
So that's something, you know, you don't want to throw out with the bathwater. Here, I think you'd want an explanation. They didn't lobby for you on behalf of, on the side of prohibiting puppy mills, right? But they, your position trustee is that they knew your position, right?
They knew what we were doing.
They certainly knew what we were doing and they came in with the people who.
Yeah, I understand why that's setting.
Yeah, and it was brought up, whether or not there was a conflict and our attorney at the time said the conflict is really between them and their client and whether or not their client wanted to have our lobbyists working for them. But now the issue is, do we want to continue our relationship with that lobbyist as that has continued? So, you know, it's not the end-all, be-all issue, but it's, you know, it's something that, that, yeah.
What other communities do they work with?
This company, I'm not sure.
Glenview.
Glenview stance on it?
Well, they don't have a, they don't have a puppy mill ordinance that we have, so.
So they don't.
So I don't.
So they're indifferent?
At this point, they're probably indifferent. I don't think they're even aware of it, but. Because I don't know to what extent.
You could get their client list and we could ask for that.
Yeah, I'd like to see what other community.
I have the client list right here.
Oh, you do?
Yeah. So.
How many communities around here?
Glenview's the only other one. That's the only other community that they represent.
Really?
Of note, and I'll throw it out here now, the other main one that we might be interested in, I don't know, is Springfield Armory.
Is that another lobbyist?
No, no, that's their other, one of their other clients. So one of the major gun manufacturers in the state is one of their clients.
Well, the work for Glenview, no doubt, had relation to Apt, right? To Apt's sales tax.
Absolutely.
So that's clearly why they were brought in.
There was dialogue between us and quite a few towns that would have been severely impacted by any changes in the sales tax revenue stream. Probably Yelkrow Village, too. You know, I mean, I don't know at one time if we all pitched in, you know, to attack it because thankfully the guy, the natural death.
I mean, I guess I'd be curious to see who Schaumburg uses. You would imagine they would have someone who's equally interested in sales tax preservation and other communities like that.
You know, I don't know, Lake County Municipally, I don't think they have anybody.
Yeah, I don't think so.
No. All right, well, let's all talk and then, you know, get a dialogue going and document it with a letter and email and share it with everybody on the board. Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, that one was pulled, well, tabled. All right, so unfinished additional business? Okay. New business communication. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? And go into committee at the whole.
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Trustee Schultz. Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye. Aye, motion carries. Okay, first order of business on committee at the whole is. How do I do it?
Approval of the.
Well, you got to prove the minutes, eh? Maybe I stuck it with the pile of papers. Okay. Oh, here we go, okay. All right. No? Yeah, well, I had it on a piece of paper. Okay. Okay. First item is approval of the committee at the whole meeting minutes of December 10th, 2019. Okay. Is there a motion to that extent?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Comments, questions, corrections, deletions? If not, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz. Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, the only item on here is Hawthorne Mall, 120 Hawthorne Center, consideration report and recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval of revisions. Two special use permit, authorizing a three-lot subdivision, approval of zoning variations, approval of the site and site and landscaping plans for property commonly known as Hawthorne Mall. And the representatives are here, so you guys want to step forward? You guys want to introduce yourselves?
Good evening. My name is John Michelle. I'm Senior Vice President of Development for Centennial.
I'm Mickey Walker with Kimley Horn, the civil engineer for the project.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. My name is Steve Bauer. I'm an attorney with Melzer, Pertell and Stell here as land use counsel.
Yeah, okay. All right. So is this Mike Atkinson or whose baby is inside his dad?
This is mine, Mr. Mayor, and I can give a brief summary of the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. First of all, on the screen in front of you shows what Hawthorne Mall is proposing. This would be a three-lot subdivision along Milwaukee Avenue. It's just south of Ring Drive. This plan shows how the lots would be laid out. They anticipate single-use tenants for each of the lots, most likely to be restaurants. The proposal does not include any residential uses. Of course, this will be considered at a later date. This is strictly for resident, excuse me, restaurant-type uses. As you can see from the slide, access would be from Ring Drive to the north and from the excess drive adjacent to Denny's to the south. They would traverse north and south using Ring Drive, also known as Mall Drive, located east of the outlawed buildings. Note, excuse me, note also, you can see the existing Mall Drive with its curved nature there, going north and south. They would straighten that out and it would create a more buildable lot, too, as shown on this screen. The petitioner is not requesting architectural approval at this time. They would come back at a later date before the Planning and Zoning Commission and then the Village Board for these approvals. They may also request at that time variations related to the building placement and also special use permits for restaurants that may be serving alcohol. So tonight's request is related solely to the subdivision approvals, site plan approval and landscape approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on January 8th to consider this request. And in reviewing the overall development, the Planning and Zoning Commission was supportive of the plat of subdivision and landscape buffer variations. The landscape buffer variations would be along Milwaukee Avenue. They'd have about an 11-foot setback rather than a 25-foot setback, pretty much equal to the setbacks that are shown out there right now for the Sears parking lot. They did, however, want to forego variations for the building pad placement until such time that the petitioner came back for architectural approvals for each individual lot. In reviewing the request for site and landscaping approvals, the Planning and Zoning Commission thought it appropriate to recommend preliminary approval. And then at a later date, when they consider the architectural approvals for the individual lots, they would consider final site and landscaping approvals. So overall, Planning and Zoning Commission felt that the standards outlined in Section 18.3 of the zoning ordinance were met and recommends the following. First of all, on a vote of seven in favor and zero against, recommendation to approve an amendment to 2013-014, authorizing revisions to a special use permit for a planned unit development, granting approval of a three-lot subdivision. Secondly, on a vote of seven in favor and none against, to recommend approval to amend ordinance 2013-014, authorizing certain landscape buffer strip variations. And more specifically, those are outlined in Exhibit A attached to your packet. Thirdly, to approve an amendment to ordinance 2013-013, authorizing preliminary site approval for the outlots. And then finally, on a vote of seven in favor and zero against, to recommend approval of an amendment to 2013-013, authorizing preliminary landscape approval, again, just devoted to those outlots. Now, and again, the commission's preliminary approval and the recommendation sticking to just the preliminary approval was related to just the outlots. For clarity, the petitioner is requesting preliminary and final approval so they can begin construction this spring on only the north-south realignment of Ring Drive or also known as Mall Drive. They would comply with the conditions that are recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission for the outlots. So if the board concurs with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations and the petitioner's request, I can outline the motions that would be needed tonight. There's five motions that I've, that are in your packet. But for now, I'll throw this to the petitioner to answer any questions that you may have. And again, if the board gets to the point where they want to put forward those motions, I can outline those for you one at a time and I would recommend we take individual votes for each motion, just for clarity. So with that, I'll throw it to the petitioner.
Mike, you got a question? You had it for me. Oh, no. Okay.
Do you have candidates already for these lots already?
We are in the market. We're talking with prospects, predominantly food users. We're not prepared to announce anyone or bring anything forward at this time.
Okay, trustee Markwart.
With the ring roads going across Milwaukee to the opposite side, the way that it's structured now, it's, you really can go straight across. You either take your left turn or your right turn. Are you willing to move that to the fact that you can go straight across?
You're talking about into Melody Farms? There's a plan, it's not our plan, but there is, as far as I understand, and perhaps.
I can help.
Dave wants to answer that?
We have a permit revision into IDOT. There's a number of things we're working through. Attorney Frillo has been helpful in terms of obtaining easement more recently from Denny's. We're looking to package that up, resubmit it to IDOT. Regency previously had submitted money or given money to the village to accommodate that. And so we'll utilize those funds. We have a permit application into IDOT. We hope to move forward with that sometime in the summer. Separate of this project.
But you're referring to the cross at Denny's, not the one at Ring Drive at, because I've certainly seen cars go through from the north and from Ring Drive go straight across to just north of where Lazy Dog is illegally and not realizing.
Complete agreement in terms of this needs to get solved yesterday. In terms of that, you may recall from the mall, if you went easterly, it was Farmer's Field, so you would only go north and south. So both Ring Drive and at Denny's will be revised as part of the Melody Farm project. We had went through what the scenarios would be, coordinated that. So we're removing some pork chops, allowing through movements to occur. And so we do have a good plan. We just need to get an approval and get it constructed.
In the interim, perhaps, we need to make the signage more clear. If you look at the lights, I mean, there's small signs just saying left turn, but there, I don't even think on the street that it shows that there's, it's not as clear that there's no straight path to just north of, north of Lazy Dog.
So let me look into that.
Thank you.
What about?
Sort of unrelated, but.
Go ahead.
Sorry. So thank you for coming in today. I did watch the planning and zoning meeting and give kudos to that committee for making the suggestion to change it from final to preliminary approval. And you agreed with those modifications. It certainly made more sense. One of the questions I had, just to reiterate, were the setbacks off of Milwaukee and from what I heard from Mr. Atkins and today and also in that meeting, that that is how it's configured currently in terms of the parking lot setbacks? So that was already proved previously when Sears or whomever was the owner and now they're just repeating that? Or what, the 11 feet or whatever it is off of Milwaukee?
That's correct. The setbacks are, and I don't have the exact dimensions of the setbacks currently for the mall parking lot, but they're in substantially the same location. You could, on this picture, you could see where the paved surfaces are.
Right.
And, you know, I can say with confidence, within two or three inches, it's within the same location. The change won't be anything that the eye can see and.
So it must have been approved previously then in order to get the current parking lot in its current configuration. They approved previous, I'm a little surprised that they did that years ago when that took place, that they gave up that amount of landscape buffer just to have 100 extra, that many more parking spots were just.
Yeah, it's correct and I would, I couldn't, I couldn't even speculate as to the rationale.
Yeah, it goes back a long time and I don't know, maybe we didn't have the same rules in terms of setback around the community. rules in terms of setback, um, around the community.
Current zoning, uh, requirement, uh, code was adopted in 1982, so it was prior to current, uh, requirements.
And so would we have any guarantees that when the, uh, and I know Planning and Zoning did, did say they appreciated how the, the building outlots as pictured here were not right along Milwaukee, but do we have any guarantees from you that that will remain that way, that they're not gonna be right along Milwaukee and?
We don't have a guarantee that we won't ask for it, but in order to come back for final approval, we have to go back before both boards.
Yeah.
And you'll have an opportunity to review whatever we're actually proposing in terms of building locations at that time.
Okay.
So, there's no guarantee, but you, you're not giving up your ability to assert.
Okay, well, I guess, I guess I'll guarantee that I will assert that later, later on.
I totally understand, I totally understand that, and I, I didn't mean to suggest that.
No, 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 no.
Where, where's the sidewalk gonna be?
The sidewalk will be within an easement on the lots, uh, adjacent to Milwaukee Avenue.
So how far will they be off the road?
They'll be right, well, they'll be, well, they'll be, they'll be right on the property line, the property.
Can we go back to the other picture that shows the current?
It will be, uh, very far away from the back of curb, it will be up slope and almost at the location where the existing parking lot is at.
So it'll be 50 feet or?
Yeah.
Or more?
Every, I, I think it's more than 15 feet.
More than 15 or 50?
1.5.
So it's directly adjacent to the, uh, existing property line on the mall side, um, so there is a landscape buffer, as, uh, Mr. Brown mentioned, that is on an up slope so that you're maintaining that separation from the IDOT road.
Okay, so you're saying the sidewalk will be elevated?
No, the road sits a little bit further down.
Yeah.
From where the actual mall property is, so to maintain the existing slope, it will just be at the top, at the same level as where the parking lot will be.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, obviously, safety issues, you know.
We, we concur, um, originally as part of the planning, before they, uh, move forward with this development, we talked to them about getting easements. We want it to be as far away from the curb as possible, that's why we're putting it actually outside of the right-of-way and receiving grants of easement from them. When you're out at the parking lot currently where you see the curb is, flat area before it starts sloping down, it's substantially higher than Milwaukee Avenue, it will be built up on that plateau. I, I share the concern as far as safety and moving as far away as possible.
So, so it's to the west of where all of these outlots and the parking lot is shown?
So where, where you see their parking lot on, on the pictorial, uh, go to the east side, you see the landscape islands just on the east side of, uh, those landscape islands.
Can you see my mountain?
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, so that, so it is, so that's right next to Milwaukee then?
Um, it's right next to the Milwaukee Avenue right-of-way, but I'm thinking it's every bit of 15 feet up slope away from Milwaukee Avenue, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to get a sense of how many feet that is.
Absolutely, if, if you recall driving, uh, past there, there's a series of trees that are already, uh, in that area, and, uh, any of the grassed area, um, it's gonna be just up slope of that. And the, the key is the elevation, right? So it's much higher than the, the curb.
Okay.
Well, I'm sure we'll be discussing this further as time marches on.
Absolutely.
Okay. And, and the distance between Ring Road and then the, uh, exit and entrance into Denny's, how, how, how many feet is that? Is it 1,200 or 1,400 feet or?
I'm sorry.
From the Ring Road going south to towards Denny's, the next light, how, what's the distance?
Do you have that handy?
Uh, I think you're about 1,200 feet.
Yeah, okay. And then what, what's, okay, and the width of these outlots then are what, over 200 feet each? The width?
Yes.
Yes, yes, how many feet?
Uh, I don't have the exact number, um, I, you're probably 200 to 500 feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
But because that's ord, that is an existing ordinance.
You've got it, your honor, the, uh, the zoning code requires a minimum 200-foot width, each of those lots would comply with that requirement.
Okay, all right, I see. Okay, anybody else have questions?
Is it, if, if they so chose, would they be able to combine and put a larger building onto one of those outlots, so, so divide it into two, basically two, with one bigger and one smaller if they needed, or?
Yeah, they could choose to make that request, it would have to go back before the Planning and Zoning Commission and then back in front of you guys for final approval, but that's, that's a possibility.
In case there was a larger use.
Yeah, I mean, we would want that possibility.
Yeah.
We're not prepared to bring anything forward.
Sure, sure.
Definitely.
Okay.
Okay, staff have anything else to add?
No.
No, okay. All right, well, we're looking for a bunch of motions here, right?
Uh, if, if it's the.
Well, we got, it's page, uh, well, I got the pager. Uh, duh, 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 all the requested board actions? Do we need to do these individually?
I, I would suggest that.
Okay. All right, first motion, uh, grant, granting approval to amend ordinance 2013-014 authorizing revisions to the special use permit granting a planned unit development to allow for a grant, grant a three-lot subdivision. Is there a motion to that extent?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz. President Byrne.
Aye.
Next, next motion is granting approval to amend ordinance 2013-014 authorizing certain landscape buffer strip variations related to the zoning ordinance as listed in exhibit A, which is, you know, attached here too. Is there a motion to that extent?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Uh, roll call.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Motion carries. Okay, next is grant approval to amend ordinance 2013-03 authorizing preliminary site plan approval of the three outlots. Is there a motion?
So made. Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Trustee Markwart.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz. Trustee Oppenheim.